Excellent. Good evening. Thank you for joining us this evening. My name is Jamie Stein. I'm the Town Planner for Guilford. This will be the first of a series of public discussion and feedback section sessions regarding sections of our zoning regulations. Before I launch into a just a small introduction, I thought maybe we could take time to introduce the members of the Planning and Zoning Commission that are joining us this evening. So I'll go to my virtual right. Phil, would you like to introduce yourself?
Hi, Phil Johnson. With Bill Street, I have chickens.
Sean?
Sean Cosner.
Great. Kevin?
Kevin Clark. Hello.
Great, thank you. And I do see that Bill Freeman is sort of with us trying to connect to audio. So hopefully Bill will be able to join. So, oh, there you are. Hi, Bill. Excellent. We were just doing slight introductions. So welcome, everybody. Great. So the agenda this evening is very simple. We're just going to have a brief sort of introduction and overview of this process. And then we'll just have a free discussion and feedback session regarding the farms and farming section of our new proposed regulations. So if you'll indulge me here, I created a small presentation to walk us through this. See if I can get this to load up and. Okay, are you all seeing this presentation now? Great, thank you. So to be clear, this, as I have said, is the first of several sessions. This possible schedule to adoption of the regs was posted on the Planning and Zoning Commission's website. And it will remain up there. The idea is that, you know, the the new draft regulations, the commission has been working on with the former Planning and Zoning Department for, you know, a better part of two years. And the and a planning consultancy worked with us to get us to what is now about a 295-page document. And we did hold one public information session last, or it was January of this year. And I was a commissioner at that time, and I felt a little uneasy about, we didn't quite get enough public comment. So when I took the role as Town Planner in February of this year, I kind of made a commitment to really engaging and doing quite a bit of outreach around these regulations. They impact, you know, all residents of Guilford and just wanted to make sure that there was ample opportunity for key stakeholders or just everyday folks to be able to, you know, understand what we were proposing and provide any feedback. So this schedule is very simple, starting this evening, July 28th, and running all the way through until March 2023. The idea here is that there will be these focused, you know, Zoom-only sessions where we'll talk about specific sections of the regs. And take feedback. It's a discussion right now. None of these regs have been adopted. They're, you know, up for discussion and feedback. There will be a final public information meeting. I hope to have it the fourth Thursday in January, shown here on the schedule. January 26th, we're obligated to a 35-day public hearing notice after that. And then I hope that the Planning and Zoning Commission will entertain adoption of these regulations at their regularly scheduled March 15th meeting. I know, yep, sure.
Jimmy, I just think it's important to to note that, you know, the the impetus for this is, you know, in terms of purpose for this exercise is simplification, more approachability so that, you know, the public can understand the regulations and not have to sort through all kinds of minutia. And they can find their answers more quickly by looking at our revised regulations.
Make it more user-friendly.
User-friendly, yeah, thank you.
Right. Yes, thank you for that, Sean and Phil. It's true. The new regs, which I hope to have a clean copy out on the website, the beginning of next week, are much easier to navigate. The separation, the division, the charts, the pictures, it's just much easier to make sense than our than our current regulations. I know that this evening, you know, many of you communicated with me that the Agricultural Society has their Guilford Fair Planning Meeting. I believe it's their final meeting this evening at this same time. So, you know, I sort of thought that maybe we wouldn't be able to get everybody at all the meetings all the time. So there will be ample opportunity in all of these additional meetings to discuss the farms and farming section. And if there is enough kind of outreach, I'm I'm happy to, you know, change the focus of an upcoming meeting to again discuss farms.
Maybe at some point we like kind of note, you know, things that the the public would like us to come back to that for some reason they weren't here.
Yeah.
If you could kind of, you know, look at that. I mean, I look at, I'm looking at the document you sent out and like, I love the, I love the yellow wording on the right where it shows changes that were made or simplified. I think that's, that's great. And and the more we can do that, the better.
Terrific, yeah. So just for the the general public, I think it is probably a good idea for me to just go visit the webpage here and just walk through, hopefully show y'all where we're swirling away all of this information. So on the new website, if you go to Boards and Commissions at the dropdown and get your way to the Planning and Zoning Commission, hopefully you're coming with me on this virtual journey. You'll get to the Planning and Zoning Commission webpage, view the Planning and Zoning Commission Agenda and Minutes. This is where I've been putting all the zoning regs updates. So a little blurb here about what we're doing. The schedule for adoption is also here. And then the regular part of our Agenda Center, you'll see past meetings from the past two years, the Agenda, the minutes, the video, the legal notice and the materials. So any new meeting that pops up, I hope by the beginning of next week to have all future sessions here and have all the materials available. So this is where you can go and you can find that material. Also to note, tonight's Zoom link will be the Zoom link. So no changing, no new Zoom links. I will continue to send out emails to, if you're on our distribution list, and hopefully you did get an email from me. I'll continue to send out those emails as we, you know, get closer to future meeting dates. I'm thinking maybe a week before the meeting, I'll send out a reminder.
Amy, Jimmy, before you jump in, can I, hi, can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
The, I heard the comment about the the comments in yellow on the side, making it easier to navigate. When I first read this, it was on my phone and I didn't, those didn't jump out at me. But can you tell me, are those the the only changes, additions, deletions, modifications?
No, that's a great question, Ann. Thank you for for raising that. This is such a comprehensive overhaul of the regs that the former Planning and Zoning Department and the consultants who was hired to put this all together for us didn't do a redlined, like, you know, old regs, new regs, redlined and additions and deletions. So we've got a whole new document that we're working with. And I think, you know, there are notations on the right-hand margin of the draft regs which do kind of call out, this is a change, this is new, this is different. And so the consultant was, I think, did that very artfully in what is now a complete overhaul of the structure of the document. So it's quite challenging to be able to provide a redlined item, if that's what you were seeking.
It is a long, long time ago, I was one of the the first members of the Agricultural Commission, and we looked at at regulations back then. And some of these seemed rather different to me than back then. And it, when I can't see what it was versus what it's going to, it's hard, it's hard to know if I would agree that these are a better set of regulations coming from a farming perspective.
Yeah. What I can do, Ann, to address that, and that's a, that's great feedback, that's exactly what we're looking for in this process, is I can post the the Agriculture section of the old regs. And just so people can, you know, kind of side by side see them. Yeah. Goal is really to pluck stuff out of the 300-page document and just give you that to look at rather than, you know, the whole 300 pages. So if there aren't any more questions, I'm going to segue from from Ann's to what I think is a useful discussion. Now, and and please feel free at any point to, you know, chime in. Nothing formal here. Okay, so now that we're past the schedule, I just wanted to, so the Ann, this is sort of like, I think, getting to the heart of what you were, you know, alluding to. So I probably, June 20th of this year, I sent out a letter to about 167 addresses, unique addresses. And these were the addresses of farmland owners. And I worked with the Assessor's Office, working off of Connecticut General Statute 12-017C, individuals who had classification of their land as farmland. So that was the initial outreach. So those of you that might have received a one-page memo from me and then a hard copy of these draft farms and farming regulations, that's, that's how I got your address. And, you know, one of the most resounding things that I've heard back is this idea of definitions. So I wanted to start this evening with a presentation that shows the existing definitions that we have in our current regulations that are, you know, currently in action for farm, commercial farm and non-commercial farm. And then go through these proposed definitions. And I think that, you know, we also received a letter from the Agricultural Commission, and they had alluded to that there was no definition for commercial farming versus non-commercial farming. And and there is in the new regs, I just didn't send it in that particular memo. So I was hoping we could have a discussion here. Perhaps most, I guess, fitting to begin this conversation is really simply, the town of Guilford allows in its current regulations farming in all zones. Farm, farming and farms in all zones. And so farm being attractive land used principally for agricultural activities, forestry, nursery, or truck gardening, or for raising, keeping, or sale of livestock and fowl, or directly related to such activities. For a commercial farm, a farm that is operated primarily as an income-producing operation, and that meets the state's minimums, and it's my understanding, and I'm hoping individuals on the call who run commercial farms can help us out here. But the threshold is that a Schedule F, that's a federal income tax form, for profits and losses on a farm be scheduled. Non-commercial, any area of land used for farming, which is not commercial, including accessory to a residential use. Forgive me, I've lost my screen here. Oops. There we go. Operated primarily for self-sustainment of a family or community as a hobby for education purposes or otherwise non-commercial purposes. So, and then we have kind of a different way of defining farming. So we've, we've added a little bit more information here in the the proposed definition. Not much has changed in the commercial versus non-commercial definition of farm. But we do allude to the Connecticut General Statutes 1-1Q for the definition of agriculture. That's new in the proposed definition. Is there anyone on the line who would like to comment on this particular section? Just feel free to speak up.
Hi, this is Alexander Heil. I have a question. I'm not familiar with the general, can I get Senator started 1-1Q? Could you say a few words about that, please?
Sure, I'm happy to bring that up right here for you, Alexander. So there is an existing definition of agriculture in our regs. It does reference Connecticut General Statutes 1-1Q. And then I just took the liberty of putting here in the text the actual definition from Connecticut General Statute 1-12. I know this is fairly lengthy, so I'll just give folks some time to read through this. And in our new draft regulations, we have inserted reference to this statute in the definition section for agriculture.
It does include, it does include a reference to aquaculture, too.
It sure does, yep. Farming of the waters, tidal wetlands.
For bearing animals.
Yeah, Jamie, Keith Bishop speaking. I would encourage the keeping of the 1-1Q definition in. That is all encompassing and then makes uniform a through the rest of the state and with our adjacent towns as well. So that's really critical to me to have that consistency with the state and not to have our Planning and Zoning Commission trying to redefine what agriculture is. So I appreciate your putting this in, or the consultant putting it in.
Excellent, yeah, thank you. Thank you, Keith. That is one thing we're trying to avoid in all sections is to put anything that is contradictory to any other state or federal. And it is, I think, worth noting for anyone who wants to hear it. But it is part of the this statute that nothing herein shall restrict the power of a local zoning authority under Chapter 124. So, you know, there is this sort of broad and comprehensive definition. But there is nothing in this that would, you know, I think, be contrary to to a local zoning decision.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this particular idea of definitions? You know, I think, I think as we get in, get further into this discussion of the regs, we may want to come back and and visit this. Alexander, are you, are you now informed?
Yes, yes, thank you very much.
Thank you, you're welcome. Okay, so.
And this is Kevin. I'm just gonna probably make, pass those on to the AI Commission at the next meeting just to kind of have them review those definitions there, since I don't think they saw at their last meeting there. And providing, put back to you.
Sure, great, thanks, Kevin. The next section does talk about the Agricultural Commission. We did receive a letter from the Agricultural Commission in response to to the kind of outreach for this meeting and the draft regs. Kevin, would you, are you interested in in reading it, or would you like me to read it or put it up on the screen?
Let me, yep, I got it here, so I can.
I'll stop sharing and you can, do you want to share it or just read it?
I can share and read, you guys.
Excellent.
You got me set?
Got to let you, let you share your screen. Okay, we should be good now.
It should be up there.
Yes, thank you.
So memo from the government commission from Pete Perkins, the chairman, revisions to zoning regulations. The Gulf Agricultural Commission at their July 18, 2022, meeting reviewed the proposed revisions to the zoning regulations regarding Section F farms and farming. From the commission's review of the proposed revisions, the commission has the following recommendations to the Planning and Zoning Commission. One, the acreage per page should be one acre for one pig, and the setback should be followed. The size of a temporary farm stand should be increased from 64 square feet. This is smaller than the size of a temporary farm trailer or 10 by 10, 10 by 12 tent. Anything larger would require Planning and Zoning approval. We'd like to see horse categorized by weight for number of horses allowed per acre, horses under 500 pounds, two per acre, and horses over 500 pounds, one per acre. Llamas should be moved from two heads per acre to five heads per acre with the sheep and alpaca group. Remove burrows, since it's the same name as donkey. And then this leads into their other topic of renaming animal types. Horse and pony are equine, cow, bull, steer or bovine, sheep are ovine, goats are caprine. Llama and alpaca are chameleonites, birds versus poultry are fowls. Language of animals should be kept throughout the whole chapter. You just answered this one here, but they, you know, commercial farms and non-commercial farms didn't have a definition to help with categorizing. Just explain that one out and provide the definitions. Exception of barns and silos were removed, and we'd like to see that back in the regulations. The section of pet boarding should also be taken out. This should be taken out from the farm and animals and should be listed separately from farm animals, domestic animals, such as dogs, cats should be listed on its own and not with the farm animals. How many dogs make a count all that, a question regarding that. No number of dogs slash cats domestic, comment there. A setback for housing of more than three dogs or property line is listed as 100 feet. So they're kind of concerned about that with somebody with three dogs on their residential property, the setback of 100 feet seems kind of odd. And then changing of approval of farms or special permit request to site plan and recommendations from the AI Commission there. And then they also noted that they would like to meet with the Town Planner, Jamie Stein, to the Agricultural Commission meeting, discuss the commission's concerns. And also, commission can meet with Jamie Stein to provide additional information on the Agricultural Commission's role with the Planning and Zoning Commission. It's just kind of a welcoming or to the town and kind of sharing what each group does. So that's their letter there for recommendations review.
Thank you, Kevin. Phil, I see your hand up. Then I see a audience.
If the intent of this regulation, the change, is to make this more simplified, to change definitions to bovine, ursine, how, whatever, oh, you know, whatever the ursine is. You know, I'm pretty good on a lot of them, but I had to catch up on some of them. That it would seem to me to be, I mean, I appreciate that you could look for for that definition and go find it, but that's not making it easier.
Okay, thank you, Phil.
Just throwing it out. We can provide the feedback to their next meeting, that's fine.
But wouldn't that make it more general? And maybe we can have the term in the beginning and then in brackets.
Right, that's exactly where I would go. I would say like, you know, bovine includes, you know, cattle, not sheep, because that's something else, sorry.
No, that makes sense if you're not really diverse in it. Just looking through documents, trying to figure out, I have a sheep and I want to, how many can I have on a property and don't know it's that other terminology. But I know I'm not really keyed on it either, so.
The only one I know is ursine. We don't have any of those, right?
So I think, you know, Jamie, do you have a, do you have a question?
I was going to say exactly what Bill said and say, I'm not a farmer. But if I'm trying to read this and make it simpler, I wouldn't have known what those were.
Okay, thank you. I think we hit a nice compromise there that we could in the language and then put in parentheses what that means for the, you know, the folks who would need that. Thank you. So I think that the, as we sort of move through this presentation now, I think we can touch on some of those elements that were raised by the Agriculture Commission's memo. So really, as we move on, what I'm hoping to do here is that I have just a small section where I can jot down any comments that were raised it like sort of in in the same frame as the regulation itself, so that as we go back and do edits in the regs, I'm I'm sure not to, not to miss anything. So I think we can proceed to this notion of the farm stands. And forgive me, I'm going to have to, I realize now that in order to take notes, I have to be out of presenter mode.
Jamie, did you just jump past one of them? The the purpose, because I really wanted to comment on the purpose.
Right, yes, please, please do comment, Ann.
It seems to me, and I'm, I know I'm speaking for my husband as well on this one, who's at the other agricultural meeting this evening. The primary purpose of farming is to feed and clothe people. We grow, we grow food for people to eat. I raise wool for people to, you know, make, make sweaters and keep themselves warm, as do many other farmers in town. So I just, I think the primary purpose of farming isn't to have the town looking nice. It's nice to have an agricultural feel to the town. But that's, I think, a secondary benefit.
Great. Thank you. And do you have, very similar to the Connecticut General Statute definition of agriculture, do you have a reference for a kind of purpose of of farming that you'd like to share with us? Maybe we can craft this to be more comprehensive. I agree with you. I mean, I think where this was really kind of going with the zoning regulations was, and and we'll get to the section on ancillary uses, but the idea of allowing other, perhaps non-agricultural or traditionally agricultural uses to happen on farmland in order to maintain that presence. So I think that was the sort of the intent behind it, but as as you're raising, you know, a very important point, that it's much more comprehensive than that.
Yeah, I think, I I love those those other uses. Don't get me wrong. I think of that more as agro tourism or, you know, something related to that. I don't have specific language. I would be most happy to 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 see if I can either find it or craft something and send it.
Absolutely, great. That would be terrific. And if others also agree with Ann's comment, and please feel free to send my office, you know, stop by anytime between 8:30 and 4:30. Send me an email or write a handwritten letter. It's also fine. Great. Anyone else want to make a comment on the on the purpose?
I would concur with Ann, having, you know, farm be the important piece of it, and the second part's going to be health. Look what agriculture nor survive.
I'm sorry, Keith, I don't know if others are having trouble, but I'm only picking up every other word. I I got the sense that you're agreeing with what Ann is saying.
So I'm agreeing with what Ann is saying and that the regulations need to reflect in the definition that agriculture is first needs to be profitable in order to stay in town. And as a result of being profitable, then you can have a great look and nice operation and show, you know, that nice agricultural presence.
Great. Okay. Terrific, thank you. All right, if we're comfortable.
Would say that the, sorry, the the 1-1Q, I think, is is really critical. And Farm Bureau and our policy in Connecticut is to encourage every single town in Connecticut to stick with that same definition, so we don't have out-of-context things being taken in different towns, since it is all encompassing.
Great, great. So, yeah, we need to find a purpose that is equally all encompassing. So I think we've got that loud and clear. Let's now move to the farm stands. So this was a, this was a comment that was in the Agricultural Commission. So this was, this was a comment that was in the agricultural commissions letter. They specifically reference that the size of a temporary farm stand should be increased from sixty-four square feet. So I think the intent of these regulations here is to kind of establish less than sixty-four square feet as being temporary in nature, more than sixty-four square feet as being something that isn't temporary. And then I believe that the more than sixty-four square feet would require a zoning permit, which is done by the planning and zoning department, particularly the zoning enforcement officer. And that is done outside of the planning and zoning commission review process. Any of you operating farm stands? The commission did refer to this idea of that, you know, sixty-four square feet is not quite large enough, that if you were to set up a ten by twelve tent, you would exceed that number. So sort of we could entertain expanding that.
I agree with what the commission wrote.
Yeah, and Keith Bishop here again. Again, those pop-up tents that are easy to use, take down. It's like ten by ten, twelve by twelve. And then the next one up is ten by fifteen, I think. And when you try and set up vegetables and things to get shade and not have the perishability of things you have underneath them be in the hot sun, I would encourage ten by fifteen foot tent stand to be underneath the, as upright.
Great.
I don't, I don't see a lot of abuse going on with that, so I have no problem with it.
I mean, that allows for is temporary. The original thought was that back when the regulations came in place is that a farmer can basically drive up to the edge of the road or their driveway with their farm trailer with produce on it, and then at the end of the day, pull it back to the barn or some other portion of their property there. So that was the rationale of temporary stands there, along with the being ability to put up pop-up signs. And then we had one person, we started coming up with the regulations, which had selling flowers, which probably can be your sixty-four square foot thing on a small little TV tray type table there. We've seen all different sizes of temporary stands in town.
Thank you, Kevin. Jamie, you wanna?
So does that mean that a resident of Guilford could, on the weekends, you know, even though I'm not, I'm not typically a farmer, I could pop up my tent that I use for the craft fair and sell what I want?
If it was farm related.
So if it was flowers, that would be farm related? Yes, or it was seasonal decorations that have trees or anything related to the earth? Would that be?
Yeah.
You've gotta meet the definition of farm stands and farm products that are grown on the property. And that definition is included in the section that we're going over right now. You can't buy from other people and then turn around and sell it.
Right, but, but so any resident, because the farm Guilford is all zoned as farmland, farmland is in all of the areas of Guilford, there's not a specific area. I could, as a, as a general resident, be able to do that, correct?
I think we'll get some further clarification, Jamie, in the next section on farm stands. But I think what you're raising here is a good, is a good clue for me that the temporary section doesn't have quite the level of detail that the more permanent farm stand does. So Ann, would you like to comment?
Yeah, thank you. This is kind of, kind of a segue, but I just wanted to throw it in there. Dudley's, Dudley's farm, Dudley Farm Farmers Market, do they have any representation in this process? Has anyone reached out to them? Because I think this, this section in particular would be of great interest.
Yeah, I did, I did speak with Mr. Bill Black, is that right? Bill, Bill's that, as well as the, I'm sorry, I'm blanking on her name now. I think she's maybe the director of communications. Yes, thank you. And we did discuss, they were, I think actually it might have been you, Ann, that was telling me about how they don't really fit in the definition. Wasn't you, I'm sorry, thank you, whoever told me that. And so when I did speak with Bill, you know, he did mention quite a bit that, you know, they're interested in the, in the museum aspect of farming and in the historic sort of representation of that age of farming. And so I think that they're, they do have representation as a nonprofit. Them operating their farmers market may fall under something different here. But it would be, we're circling back with them to see how they are sort of considering themselves particular to this discussion.
And then I don't want to jump ahead, but I, I have a, I feel very strongly about some, one or two of the farm stand items.
I think we're ready. I mean, so Jamie's comment, I think, is gonna be helpful for any members of the public who think to themselves, you know, I'm a crafter, I would really like to put out a table and display, you know, some of the things that I make and, and sell them. And I think, you know, this is why we're having these conversations, because this particular section is focused on sort of farming and the yields of farming that do have a retail component. And, and Jamie, there's another section about home handicraft businesses and the permitting of them. So we may be able to find space in that section as well for what you're looking to do. But go ahead, Ann, we can.
Yeah, so, and in the next section, when it talks about in terms of products sold at the farm stand, I have no problem with at least fifty percent being produced by the farmer. That perfect sense. I have a problem with the remaining products must be Connecticut grown. And I'll tell you why. It's some of, some of the things that are logical for us to help sell, like when we sell our meat. There are seasonings that are very popular that we'd like to be able to sell that are not Connecticut grown. They're very much related to our products. They would, they would fall under the up to twenty percent sold, maybe farm related. But it looks like if, you know, the way I'm reading this, if I was gonna read it, you know, really to the letter, their products, they're not grown in Connecticut. So if you're saying, if it's, I, I don't, I guess, I, it needs more clarification. And, and I have a problem with everything in the stand needing to be Connecticut grown.
Okay, Ann, just for the record, could you, could you please let us know what your operation is?
Oh, sure. I'm with Olympia Farm. We are a small family farm. We're the only licensed dairy in Guilford. So we sell, we, we raise animals. So we have a flock of sheep, which give us meat and also wool. We have a herd of goats, which give us goat cheese and also meat. We raise the occasional steers and the occasional veal calf. We also have a flock of chickens where we get eggs and we sometimes do roasters. We have, we do honey. I think that's it.
Okay, thank you, Ann, thank you. Great, so as Ann was stating, you know, I think also we didn't quite address it, but this idea of safe and adequate vehicular access is maintained. You know, we, we have had, you know, some individuals throughout the town who have sold things sort of out in front of their homes. And, you know, just to be mindful that that could become a traffic hazard if there isn't quite enough space for folks driving by to stop. But I think the meat of what Ann is getting at is, oh, go ahead.
All right.
Oh, okay. At least fifty percent of all farm products must be produced by the farmer operating the stand and may come from any land the farmer leases or owns. I'm hearing that we're comfortable with that threshold. Okay? The remaining products must be Connecticut grown. I can, you know.
Jamie, what, what is the, what is the logic for a threshold? I'm just trying to, you know, I, I, I'm just going back to the, the genesis of this project, which is to simplify.
Yeah.
Or user friendly. And I, I, I'm just a little bit surprised by the specificity of this. And, you know, it just doesn't, it doesn't make sense to me in some ways. It just.
I'm with Sean from the.
Percentages.
Are we gonna like start tracking back product? Like who's.
Yeah, it just, it, it's like.
Who's gonna enforce that?
What are we actually doing? It's.
And why, and, you know, I appreciate we want to encourage local business, but we don't want to discourage local business by not allowing them. I'll give you an example, sorry. My wife bought a lovely fish over the mantle thing, had taken for granted. I guarantee you, it wasn't made in Bradford. But it's still, you know, it supports.
Well, I mean, I think, yeah, I mean, I think the crux here, Phil, if I may, is that because farming is allowed in any zone, we are now saying that retail and commercial activity of, that is of a farm in nature, can happen in any zone. Typically, if, and I'm getting back to Ms. Lynch's comment earlier, if someone were to come to the planning and zoning office and say, you know, I make widgets and I want to put up a table and sell widgets in my front yard, I would say you can't do that, because we do not allow the retail sales of items in residential zones. But we're making an exception here for farming, because we as a, you know, as a community, want to support that activity. So I think some type of, you know.
I think, I think the fifty percent margin is not unreasonable. Like at least fifty percent of what you're selling has to be domestically produced. But if, you know, if, if you're selling honey and there happens to be a candle there that's made by the Yankee Candle Factory in Massachusetts, or that that.
But, but excuse me, who's gonna monitor?
Well.
Thing relative to fifty percent of anything. It just, it, it just, it doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah, perhaps there's a different language that we could look for that just speaks of, you know, the, the, the majority of materials are to be, or, you know, certain, I don't know how to say.
I would be much more, I would be much more comfortable with that. I just think that percentages look like there's a, you know, there, there's a state control of something. And it just, it doesn't make sense if we're, if we're an agricultural community and we're trying to encourage people to, you know, market products that they're growing on their own land. I don't see why there is this percentage thing in the, in the regulations.
Yeah, accessory products to whatever they're selling.
Exactly.
Should not.
I mean, if someone wants to sell honey and they want to sell candles from Massachusetts or Canada, I don't care.
Okay, yeah, and I mean, I think that that's also, Jamie, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say this and then I'll, I'll, I see your hand up. You know, the idea that if someone were to erect a structure in which they wanted to, you know, a full-time building in which they wanted to do retail sales of their farm products, that would be an opportunity for individuals to come before the commission in a, in a site plan review and detail that out. So, yeah, perhaps, you know, we go a little bit more loose on the language, rather than trying to dictate something that we can't necessarily.
Yeah, I, I would, Jamie, I would focus more on the size of the temporary structure. And, and then, you know, if someone wants to set up a permanent structure, we focus on that too.
I agree.
And just, you know, move on from percentages of local versus, you know, anything else.
Great, thank you. Jamie, I'm gonna ask you first, and then I see both Keith and David as well. Go ahead, Jamie.
I was just gonna suggest the language of the majority of such is farm products produced by the farmer, instead of having a percentage that nobody can actually measure.
Yeah, exactly.
It's gonna be notable, everyone's gonna be noticing if it's, you know, you have got your farm stand and everything's coming from Ocean State Jaw Block.
Right, so that, so majority being fifty percent.
Well, we can just get rid of the number, I think I'm seeing a lot of head nod.
Let's be, let's be honest. I mean, it all depends on what they start with. If they, if they open their stand and, and they're at fifty percent, but most of the stuff that they sell is local, then they would be over fifty percent. So it, it's just a crazy idea that you're gonna have a fifty percent rule. It just doesn't make any sense.
Well, my thought was that you get rid of the measurement of fifty percent. You get rid of the measurement of twenty percent. And you get rid of the Connecticut grown by saying the majority of such products are, you know, made by or come from local farmland.
Yeah, but, okay, that's great. But who is gonna monitor that? Why is it irrelevant? Why is it relevant?
I, right, let's also, thank you, Jamie, thank you, Sean. Let's move to Keith and then David.
Thank you. This particular section goes back fifteen or twenty years. There's some similar language that was put in. Strawberry Howell Farm in particular, and what their crop and their size and things were, has a special permit to allow them to take and sell things that aren't growing on their property. And because they're in a non-commercial zone, that was put through. I agree that there should be a percentage rather than some other arbitrary thing that is just as hard to take and measure. Receipts and proving out what coating is, you know, your own product, what coating you buy from somebody else is really easy in this day and age for financial records are required. Things should reference the Schedule F, which if anybody has an agricultural exemption from the state for sales tax, you're required to have a Schedule F to go along with it. And twenty-five hundred dollars worth of receipts entitles you, as long as you meet the rest of the criteria, to the agricultural sales tax exemption. So I don't think, that's not a burden whatsoever. The, the purpose here, as I see it, is to encourage the right kind of farming and encourage farming, not to encourage look-alike farms that want to turn around and sell things and pop up something on the side of the road. And I want to make sure that we maintain the purity that people are actually growing things here in Guilford to a fifty percent or higher level. And then when they need to augment it because of crop failures, like is in the last bullet down there, that was put in in the regulations previously, that those things then don't come in the way of somebody continuing when you've got that type of a situation going on. Having it be, and Sean, also, I respectfully ask Sean, and Sean, the commission members, listen to the public. Please, commission members, try not to ask questions unless they go through Jamie and raise your hand. This is a limited time. Fewer people and farmers have the opportunity here. The commission has a chance to talk, you know, every couple of weeks in your regular meeting. So thank you. With that, this is my comment on this section, I think, until you get to number three, farmers market.
Thank you, Keith and David.
Quickly, if I understand, in part, the point, and I think it ties in with what Keith just said, if you don't have some kind of a threshold, it doesn't mean that Jamie has to go out there every day and count the number of pieces of corn that somebody is selling. But it does presumably, what we're trying to do here is, is encourage and facilitate the use of Guilford property as, as farmland. And you don't necessarily want somebody to go over to the, to the farmer, not that, what am I trying to refer to? The, the long wharf and buy wholesale fruits and vegetables and stick a stand out in front of your house and pretend that you're a farmer, throw some dirt on your head and call yourself a farmer. And what you're really doing is selling somebody else's, maybe even grown outside of the state of Connecticut, lemons and limes. So I think the point of facilitating farm stands is to encourage local agriculture. And if you don't have thresholds, it doesn't mean that it has to be enforced today. But if there's somebody abusing the system, you have the, the foundation to say, to shut that person. The foundation to say, to shut that person down and say, hey, this is not what we meant by farm stands.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Two questions, if I might. Thank you so much. In, I guess, bullet point number one that we're discussing. And may come from any land the farmer leases or owns. Obviously, that, there's, that, that. Has a period and that is without limitation. Like, in other words, you could have land here, you could have land somewhere else that you might have an interest in. And I assume that that's the intention of this, that. The farmer could have more than one farm and more than one place to grow. Is that, am I reading that correctly?
You got it, Chuck. Yep.
So, so, quick question. If I had a. Cornfield in Maryland, cuz you're not getting.
Oh, you're devil's advocate here.
Yeah, I'm just throwing it out. Like, if I owned, if I owned land in Guilford and I own land in Maryland. And right now, Maryland is producing corn and I bring it up here.
Is it Gene Mester on the, on the call?
Hi, Gene. We're, thank you for joining. We're, Mr. Johnson was just making his point here.
Sorry, I'm just, I'm making a point that if I owned land in Maryland and I owned land in Connecticut and we're currently not harvesting corn in Connecticut. I believe, but Keith can help me on that. You know.
I think, yeah, I mean, I do think that the, the, I believe this was written by Glenn Chalder, our planning and zoning consultant. And I do believe that he was very strategic here in that, you know, no zoning permit. Is required and there's very little detail on what a temporary farm stand is. I think the zoning permit requirement for a larger size farm stand could be the place where we. You know, have this discussion with the applicant about, you know, what you're selling, where you're getting it from, how much it is. And, and maybe, you know, you, we don't wanna make this too arduous, but, but maybe it's. You know, it, it goes quickly before the, the ag commission or maybe there's another body that reviews it.
Has this been abused to the best of our knowledge?
I, I couldn't really answer that. Maybe others on the call who have.
You know, but people have abused this. You're, you're. You're the big fish in the pond.
Yeah, what, what I just don't.
No.
A regulation in search of a problem.
I don't, I'm not aware of anybody abusing it, but it's real easy. You can go over to Madison and East River and you can see a farm stand that's on the side of the road. That has absolutely nothing to do with Madison products whatsoever and it looks like a farm stand.
In your Chinese food restaurant.
But, but Keith, is that, is that a, is that a problem we have to solve with these regulations?
If you don't keep the framework here, then you're gonna turn around and potentially invite a problem in a residential zone and have the neighbor piss off.
Well, then that, 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 that creates a whole nother problem for them.
Um, okay, I think, David, I'll, I'll entertain one more comment. No.
As, as I, I think maybe Keith observed, there's a legitimate farm stand with legitimate farm in Madison and down the road. Is a legitimate, not a farmer, farm stand. Who do you wanna encourage? Your farmers or the guy who goes to the food terminal?
And, and all, all I'm gonna say is. I'm just questioning whether, how do you enforce it? And do you wanna have an enforcement mechanism for this type of? You know, in, 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 infraction. That, that's all I'm saying. It, I don't know how frequent it would be. I don't know how serious it would be, but I just think. I, if you, if you set this up. You know. It, it, it creates, it creates problems that we can anticipate. And I don't think there are problems now. Maybe Keith has other ideas about that, but I just don't know.
Well, I, if I may, I think it's important just to nip the problem in the butt before it occurs. I could have a farm for coffee in Latin America and start selling coffee here. You know. I'm just being devil's advocate, but.
No, I agree.
So I think to, to, to include, I'm, I'm with Keith here, to, to include a little language saying. It has to be done locally. I think that would be very useful for our goals.
The produce.
Yeah. Okay, Kevin.
You're not gonna buy corn then. I, I know Keith, if you, I don't know if you're selling corn right now, but not at a farm stand, but. You know, there's not corn getting pushed out yet, I don't believe.
It's right on the verge.
Right.
Kevin, would you like to have the final comment on this? And then I think due to time, we're farmers markets.
Sure, just on the, the point here of the, the type of materials and stuff being sold there. This isn't new to this regulation here. This has been in practice and are older regulations there. And it was put into place this for the purposes like Keith indicated before of the Strawberry Hollow. His practices there and allowing similar farm stands popping up to also have the similar. Abilities there to, to act on. And also the multiple properties thing is, is that a farmer could, I mean. The good point there, we may have to change some wording to say. Within Guilford or so many miles of the stand or something like that. For the offsite properties there, but farmers do have like. One field on, say, Long Hill Road for growing corn and another one on. Tenermarsh Road for growing pumpkins and another one, who knows, up on Gray Hill Road, growing another product and. So having a farm stand each one of those things, they'll have the products brought down to one farm stand to sell them. So that's sort of the basis behind that. Multiple fields and having a remote or the stand at one of the locations, but not all the locations there.
Land is suitable for growing Y, but Y is not suitable for growing C. And therefore, different. Different plots of land are just necessary.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Kevin, for that sort of institutional knowledge there. Duly noted, farmers markets. Commercial farms may sponsor farmers markets, provided. You know, and so we're, I wanna be mindful of, I believe Anne may have been alluding to this earlier. I do not believe that Dudley Farm is a commercial farm. I believe that they're a nonprofit and operate as a museum. However, they do hold and host a farmers market. So, you know, just keeping that in mind that that is something that I have thought of. Others have comments on this area.
Keith, I do have one. Specifically because of the Dudley Farm situation. Then I would change that to be five hours per day and a maximum of two days per week to allow for farmers market on Saturday and Sunday.
Okay. Now, do you know the history of how Dudley Farm came to be able to host a farmers market? Was it, was there a special permit? Option there? Maybe Kevin, you're, you're gonna comment on this?
Yeah, I believe they recently, in the past. Five, six years had, had a special permit issued to them. I'm not sure if it covers the farm market part, but. That covers them ability to have other special events on their property, such as weddings within their. Their, um, barn and stuff there. And I'm not sure if they covered as part of that special permit wrapped in their. Farm market activities in with that or not. That kinda needs to be researched and. But I believe they do have a special permit for some activities there.
Right, thanks, Kevin. Yeah, I mean, we just wanna be mindful that we're not creating. A non-conformity for an existing use here. And Keith duly noted. The, the diff- differentiation here of totaling no more than five hours per day. You know, I, I would think that in there, if they do have a special permit to allow for a farmers market. Do we want to consider a limitation on the number of days or no? Getting into the, too far into the regulatory weeds as Sean would agree.
Right now, if it can only be five hours a week, I think Keith is suggesting that. We kinda let up on the regs a little bit and I, I think that makes sense.
I think two days a week for those types of activities is all you're gonna be able to take and market in this day and age and attract, you know, people to come. So. You know, five hours a day is also, I think, a difficult situation and two days a week maximum. Fits and if somebody needs something different, then they come to the commission to ask for a special permit.
I've got one other question. Um, it says, "Commercial farms may sponsor farmers." Why, why, why do we have to make it commercial farms? Or even farms? Like, what if, just, I don't know, I'm just throwing this out and, and I, I just made this up off the top of my head. So please don't anyone think that there's any. Anyone other than me, what if, what if the Guilford Agricultural Society, which is all about promoting and sustaining farming? What if the Guilford Agricultural Society thought it would be cool to do a seasonal farmers market?
Yeah.
If they're, they're not a commercial farm.
Yeah, thank you for that, Anne. And I think this also alludes to Dudley Farm, which is not a commercial farm.
Right.
But I believe that the agricultural society has a special permit which allows them to host these types of events. So if they wanted to do. A seasonal market, I think that would go towards their number of events. And, you know, perhaps it's the same way for the. For the Dudley Farm to be able to host these special events, but definitely worth looking into more and entertaining more. Discussion about this distinction of farmers markets only for commercial farms.
Thank you, Anne.
Uh, did I see another hand up on this one?
My hand was up, but I was just gonna agree with her, what she was saying. And say like the Madison Green during the summer on Friday afternoons, they have something. So. You know, if somebody else wanted to sponsor something temporarily, I, I don't know. I, I think it's a great thing.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, sorry, just trying to get my note taking here. Okay, excellent. Thank you all. Let me remember to save. Okay. Uh, okay, if we're comfortable moving. Okay, moving on. The keeping of animals. We've received a few comments on this particular section. There. Uh, one in particular that I have noted here is the idea of. Proposed barns and enclosures and their setbacks. I did get a call from an individual. With a historic farm in town who was concerned that their barn, where they do house animals is right up on the road. So just to be mindful that this, this condition may render some existing non-conforming uses and. Perhaps we add some language in here about, you know, newly constructed or something like that. Or we just get rid of it all together.
Yeah, it seems, it seems kind of prohibitive. I mean, we're off the road. And I certainly hope that all of our outbuildings conform to this, but. That's, that's pretty far if you're trying to make, if you're trying to make best use of, of the space that you have.
I, I would just, I would just ask, in general, what is trying to be accomplished with this? Is it to. Protect neighbors? Is that, that the main purpose?
Perhaps. Kevin, do you have some institutional knowledge on this one?
There was, that was put in there to kind of increase the setbacks due to potential noise and odors to the adjoining properties there.
Okay, but, but if someone, and, and I'm not sure how you'd characterize historic, but. If someone has had a, had a property for. Pick a number ten.
Well, this would be for new, like you said, the fact that distinguishing there for new construction wise.
I think that makes sense.
I mean, fencing is another thing you may have to look at differently, but I think that, that. The area which permanently houses them overnight or long terms probably should be. Like you said, the setbacks double the thing is what the regulation is there, but. Fencing and stuff. Is probably can look at different cuz the animals roam, they're not really in one spot all the time.
I, I mean, to your knowledge, Jamie, have we had problems with this? I mean, you, you're.
Yes, we, we have gotten. It's about the smell of livestock on people's residential property. A, a few. I mean, in the, in the past two months, I've, or I'm sorry, in the past five months.
And have they, have they, have they broken through fencing or have they just been too close or what?
No, I mean, I think, I think all of them resulted in just neighbor to neighbor discussion. We really didn't take any zoning enforcement action. Did go and visit the site just to check for, you know, head count and cleanliness, but I think it was just a hot day and. Sunshine on, you know. On some poop, made some, some odors, but nothing, nothing crazy. No, sorry, I know, I know what you're gonna say.
I would encourage that there be no different setbacks for agriculture than there are for other buildings. And residences that exist in the zone that is in. For, for one, that can play some hard burdens depending upon the actual lot itself and the shape of what can be done and where. No animals may be, albeit be kept within fence and so forth. Odor situation is best management practices and I'm pleased to see that on their number one, you've got A, B, and C. That refers to the Right to Farm Act. Also, the best standards. Practices from deep. The Farm Bureau worked extensively with the past ten years. And as well as the Public Health Code that also has standards for where livestock should be in relationship to water supplies. I think those should be the key ones and that should also, whether it's commercial or non-commercial, they should be the same. And not to have sort of a separation between number one and number two, the way it's laid out there. That's my comment that I wrote down as I'm looking in the dark here as I'm outside trying to. Read in the light of my laptop.
Could you just, could you just clarify for me that last comment about you don't want a distinction? For a commercial or non-commercial and is, do you feel that? One calls out, number one calls out commercial and number two doesn't, or I'm sorry, I missed that point.
Um, I guess, I'm mistaken in saying commercial and non-commercial. I guess the, the fewer than three acres or the three acres. That the same standards as far as the impacts of one A, B, and C. Should still take and apply to number two. As opposed to the, the number of acre, animals per acre itself. And again, there's some people that, and the ag commission weighed in on that and they've got some animal people more specifically and. I have very few animals myself, so I'm not a strong one to weigh in ultra heavy on that one.
Okay, thank you. Okay, great. All right, if we're feeling comfortable with the keeping of animals section here, we can move on. Okay, I'm just making sure to save. Okay, here we are now in the commercial farm, non-agriculture ancillary uses. The idea here was to, I believe that. You know, we took a look at what was allowed as accessory or ancillary uses on, on. Commercial farms. So again, this applies to commercial farms. And so what Glenn did for us here is he set up a chart that tried to help us distinguish. Any activities that would be considered ancillary to, to the act of farming and how we may consider permitting them. So. If there aren't any direct questions on this one. You know, I think what we're looking for here is some of the activities that commercial farm owners. are considering or are currently, uh, you know, uh, doing on their properties and, and what would allow sort of the flexibility to be able to do that, uh, uh, year-round. And as you'll note here, the chart is really based on the amount of days, uh, per calendar year that the activities are done. So this idea of low-intensity outdoor recreation activities such as bird watching, snowshoeing, and/or other passive recreation, uh, no zoning permit required, whether you're, you know, doing it less than 30 days a year or more than 30 days a year. Uh, pick your own operations or single farm-related activity or similar farm-related activities. Uh, if you're doing it more than 30 days per calendar year, a zoning permit, which again is done by the staff, the planning and zoning staff. It is outside of the Planning and Zoning Commission process. Events of limited duration that are open to the general public, including but not limited to hayrides, corn mazes, harvest festivals and similar activities, less than 30 days a calendar year, no permit required. More than 30 days, again, the local, or I'm sorry, the, the administrative or staff level permit. Uh, these next ones are a little bit different. Major non-agricultural uses, including but not limited to retreats, weddings, workshops, education, training and classes, provided there will be no amplified sound outdoors after 5:00 PM. One to five days per calendar year, a zoning permit from the staff. More than five days per calendar year, a special permit. Uh, any activity involving amplified music or amplified sound outdoors after 5:00 PM, special permit across the board. Comments, questions? Oh, sorry, Keith, you have your hand up?
Uh, I'm sorry, Chuck, the key seemed to be amplified. Did I cut someone off? I'm sorry.
Uh, well, I, I think we were going with the raising of hands, Chuck. So if you don't mind, go with Keith and then, and then to you and then to Ann.
All right, um, my first comment is that, um, I don't view "pick your own" as ancillary. Um, it's a harvest, um, method for farm. So then having that to be a, um, permit required to harvest your crop in that method. Um, so I would urge that that be removed. Uh, then the second piece of it is, um, under, um, number of calendar days per year for, um, other things such as, um, you've got a number, uh, D and E here, that there's some relationship to the amount of acreage that then also comes into effect. And if you've got something, it's then, you know, a three to five acre parcel and that's farming, that is much different than having, um, 50, 75, 100 acres and how that comes into play itself for the type of events and what is already on the grounds and is done.
And the idea there, Keith, is that a smaller acreage would have, be more impactful for neighbors or?
Right, I would generally say that's absolutely right. I mean, you've got people in closer proximity to it that's going to be more impacted than if you've got an activity that is then, um, you know, farther away from the road within the farm fields that you're doing, putting up a tent, whether it's, you know, temporary for a weekend or for, you know, multiple events on different weekends that are planned out. Uh, there are a lot of people these days that are looking for event spaces that are non-traditional. Um, they are coming to farms across the state looking for that type of a situation to have and to host. And, uh, you know, it gets kind of burdensome for a farm looking for additional revenue streams to help them stay productive and in business to then have to go through a more elaborate process to get approved to do events and looking to keep that as streamlined as possible.
Okay.
Other people make comments and I might have follow-ups.
Yeah, just a question. Um, so I, I'm not sure where the magic is in one to five days on, on, um, number, uh, letter D.
Right.
So, you know, a, I'm not sure what characterizes major, but a major non-agricultural, um,
Good question.
Uses.
How many, how many days just woodstock?
Yeah.
I don't know. And I'm not saying we're throwing it out, but like, you know.
But, but, but who's, you know, who, who is monitoring this? And, and I, one to five days per year, who, who, who came up with that number? And is that?
Yeah, I think, I think there's an interest here of maybe trying to distinguish in some way a special event versus a more regular activity, but you know, I don't, I don't have a rubric for why.
Then we have to start defining special event.
Right.
You know, and, and then we gotta start defining the, well, that represents a special event.
I do also want to, Ann, I know you have your hand up and you're next in the queue, but I also want to direct folks' attention to, uh, number three here. Uh, and so the, the chart itself really doesn't allude to the idea of a, a formalized structure. Um, you know, I know that, uh, the new owner of Trout Lily Farm is on the phone and you've got a couple of really cool structures there that I think in the past were used for a training facility, you know, overnight stays. So I think once we get into the space of constructing something, now we're in a, we're in a site plan application. And so, uh, you know, number three is kind of referring to, uh, bringing these types of uses, albeit on commercial farms into the fold of, of, you know, the site plan process and the Planning and Zoning Commission's purview. Uh, go ahead, Ann.
Thanks. Um, so my, so I was, I was looking at, um, major, major events. I, I have so many events, you know, I have my, my monthly knitting group and I, you know, occasionally teach a knitting or a spinning class. So I realized those are both agriculturally oriented and they're not major. But who decides what's major? And, and kind of like I'm going back to some of the questions that some of the gentlemen asked earlier, like, who's gonna monitor that? What makes it major? And, sorry, got a puppy in the background, um, and, and what makes that a problem? So that's, I just throw it out, you know, for people to chew on. Just kind of jumped out.
Yeah, thanks, Ann. I mean, I, the only thing I can really, um, uh, you know, reference here is just, um, when we do field complaints from neighbors about certain activities, uh, there is a discussion about, you know, was this a one-off? Was this, you know, a special graduation party that isn't ever gonna happen again? Or is this happening on a routine basis? So I, I do see the need in terms of if, if things go off the rails and we need to bring it back in to, uh, be able to have some, some sort of, uh, you know, definition or, or threshold that we can point to, uh, you know, whether or not, uh, these are the correct ones, uh, I think is up for discussion. Uh, Kevin, do you have a, a comment?
Uh, this comment or maybe a possible point here is that when you're talking about major and stuff like that, Sean brought up like, um, woodstock and stuff there, which is like I said, a long weekend event where thousands of people showed up. And the question is, do you use number participants? The definition there is major or not major. You had something like Anna indicated there with 10 people in our house doing knitting, um, versus 120 people out for a wedding reception in somebody's, um, field. Um, so I think probably a number may need to be looked at for just to throw up for discussion.
Thank you. Uh, and Chuck?
Uh, I, I would say that as we're discussing, uh, proportionately, what constitutes major versus or just not? Uh, because I don't know that necessarily what is just not major is necessarily minor. But at any rate, uh, proportionality, uh, as to the, I would think in terms of the intensivity, uh, of not just the use, but the size of the land or the property. Uh, as had been mentioned before, might have something to do with it. For example, uh, the, the guy with 75 acres and a gigantic parking lot could obviously host a very large number of people. Whereas the kind of smaller orchard or the smaller farm certainly shouldn't be precluded from having, uh, that very same "pick your own", but by the same token, similar to the farm stand regulation, uh, that we spoke about earlier. Perhaps, you know, it might be limited to, you know, 12 or 20 people, you know, says something like that. And I, I apologize, I don't remember the exact, uh, proportionate, uh, proportionality language that was used uh, as to the, I think it was the farmer's market language, but it was like, something like you have to have three spots per booth. Uh, that was that kind of, uh, but at, at any rate, something, uh, related to proportionality might actually make the regulation workable.
Okay, thank you.
It's a tough one, Jamie.
I don't think there's,
The reality, the reality is like, on a, on a really big piece of property, you can have quite a few people that aren't going to be impactful upon neighbors. And on a smaller piece of property, you could have the same number of people that could be impactful. So.
Yeah, and I would just, I would just say, less is more and, you know.
I don't want to make problems where there aren't problems.
And, and if you're, if you're gonna put in very specific, you know, limitations on this, my question has always been, how are you gonna enforce it?
Well, and I don't, and I don't want to put you all as the, the,
Right, exactly.
Building department as the police on this, because you're not the police, because the police are gonna get called and then you're gonna get it on Monday. And it's gonna be after the fact and you're gonna have pissed off, you know, potentially pissed off, I mean, hopefully not. But I mean, the idea is like, hey, let's move to, you know, a, a, a process that works for everybody.
Yeah, and, and I'm not suggesting laws are fair. I'm just suggesting something that's very reasonable that people can understand. And, you know, you know, if we put so many numbers, percentages into this code, it, it just, it makes it, it makes it unusable.
Well, and I worry about,
And it makes it unenforceable.
And I worry about putting you all in harm's way for approving something that could potentially then come back to you as, why would you approve, have approved this? Even if you didn't have all the information at the time. So my, my concern is I really want to protect you as a staff um, from, from being criticized, I mean, for doing your best efforts.
Great, uh, thank you, David. I see you have your hand raised.
I, I would just point out that the, the point of having specific numbers is that it allows, uh, everyone reading these zoning regulations to have a handle on what is more than five days or less than five days. I mean, I can count, you can count. It means we understand, rather than saying, well, if it's gonna be a long time or a lot of, like, what's a lot of days? I don't know, five days, I can count five days. And the zoning regulations as drafted here, you know, a zoning permit is required for minor things. The zoning, uh, uh, special permit is required for some of the more significant things and a special permit is a public hearing. So I'm gonna find out that my neighbor is planning on having a wedding reception venue next door to me and it's gonna happen a lot, I'm gonna be able to go to the spec, to the, to the public hearing. Again, it doesn't mean that Jamie has to go out every day and count how many times something happened, but it means if there's an abuse and there's a complaint, there's a mechanism by which it can be enforced and the, the potential offender can't sit there and say, well, gee, I didn't know what a lot of days was. I thought 55 days was not a lot. There were 365 days in a year. So the point of having specific numbers is that it allows for Jamie to say, here's what's required. You're over or you're under and that's how you move on. I, the, the idea of like, everything should be some kind, like this, this fear of specific numbers is puzzling.
Okay, um, there, there is, oh, I see a few more hands. Sorry, Chuck, were you, were you finished or did you have another?
No, I did, I, yeah, I, thank you. I, I'm fine. I lowered my hand now. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Keith, I see you reach your hand. Oh, you're muted, Keith.
You're still muted.
Okay, sorry, trying to make sure no background noise hit you. Uh, I think the fear of, um, worrying about, um, enforcement is an, an over-concern. I think the number of people that are affected by what we're talking about here is relatively low. Um, go back 50, 75, the century ago, then obviously go for what's much more rural and had more agriculture of a whole different sense than what we're seeing now. Uh, so I, I think that it's gonna be relatively calm in terms of any particular actions that need to be taken and how hard they will be to deal with. I'd rather make sure that we're clear that we're supporting agriculture. We're not supporting people who are then using these regulations to then create additional retail establishments in their front yards. Um, or, or the like, uh, situation. And that there is a proportionality that we've already mentioned here before in terms of, you know, what acreage supports what and how, um, you know, how far you need to go to, you know, get a number of days per year permits, uh, that type of thing for activities, um, based upon larger size than something that's smaller. And I do want to compliment, um, I think it's under number, um, three at the bottom, that, uh, 3B, that not having to have a professionally developed site plan is much appreciated. Um, to keep it simple for, simple events unless it requires, you know, a higher level of scrutiny by the staff due to the nature of what's being asked for. So thank you.
Okay. Great, thank you. Um, any other comments on this, uh, section? Again, there is a sort of, we're alluding here to that relationship with the, uh, between the, um, zoning enforcement officer and I believe this is referencing the Agricultural Commission. Uh, but, but might actually be referencing the Planning and Zoning Commission. I can't quite tell, maybe we'll need to brush that up. I'm talking about point number four. Uh, if we're feeling good on this one, we'll move on. Okay. Uh, "Commercial farm, farm, winery, brewery, distillery. Uh, a farm, winery, brewery, distillery and/or similar operation accessory to a commercial farm." Again, these are specific to commercial farming. And here is where we've, uh, included some language about the proportionality. So occupying a minimum of 25 acres of land, uh, is permitted, provided that, and then we go through a series of, uh, standards. Comments or questions on this one? Keith? Oh, you're muted, sorry. Thank you for keeping your background noise.
Uh, thank you. Uh, here, the 25 acres to me seems excessive. Um, I've done for the Board of Ed studies on acreage and where parcels are as we look for new school sites, uh, in the past. And the number of sites that are available that have 25 acres or more that then are suitable for, uh, school site then also can reflect upon what's available agriculturally to grow. And, uh, the state statutes don't, um, reference, I think, uh, five acres in terms of having a farm winery permit, although that is up to the jurisdiction of the Department of Agriculture itself. So, uh, again, a 25 acres seems high and you may not be inviting anybody to have any brewery or distillery or winery here in Guilford other than what exists with that situation. The other comment here, due to the nature of what those operations are, generally, they're gonna turn around and be having other related events and activities and products that they sell that would go back to our previous discussion about, um, you know, 50% grown here and what that means. And that gets very sticky as Ann had related to before, where, um, where certain varieties of grapes or apples or fruit are needed in order to make blends of different products and be competitive with the marketplace. And if all you can do is grow white grapes in Connecticut, which is about seventy-five percent true, it's hard to grow any substantial number of varieties of red grapes due to our climate. You've got to bring those in from other places to blend those in to have more products available. And distilleries, basically, they're gonna be using almost zero Connecticut products. It's hard to find anything competitively price-wise, that you're gonna be able to buy grain or barley here, or that we don't have the acreage to actually do it. So that's a hard one for me to swallow, is to say that you're gonna have a distillery that you would have in Guilford that would relate to anything agriculturally.
So, I mean, it's an interesting point, Keith. I mean, so you buy, you know, material from outside of the state that you yourself don't farm, but you you, I'm not saying, I'm just, this is hypothetical, I'm not saying you specifically, you know, and then the said commercial farm, you know, creates something on site. I mean, one can argue that there is a art to, you know, wine making, to distilling, to brewing, and is that act one that is the, the product? I mean, this is, this is, I think we're sort of splitting hairs here, but I, I don't know that the, that the regs were specifically going to ingredients that much, but I mean, maybe that was the intention.
Jamie, I just think that the, the number one, that winery brewery distillery, other operations sell be accessory to the growing. I think that's the point that Keith is going to.
Okay.
You know, I mean, if there is a brewery that wants to locate in Connecticut but wants to buy their hops from New York or California or Germany, why would one have to sway them from setting up a brewery in Guilford?
I agree.
Well, I mean, again, I guess, I guess here we're back to that idea that, you know, commercial farming, essentially, one could do that in any zone. And we're sort of, you know, through these regs allowing for a bit of an exemption to our typical separation of uses and zoning. So, you know, a brewery wants to establish a place where they, you know, you know, brew things and buy from, you know, other places, and they sell their product at a retail establishment, that would be in a commercial zone. So I think that's where we, that's where we're, we're trying to kind of, you know, create this opportunity, but also trying to keep it rooted in, in, in promoting agriculture.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it does require a special permit, you know, that, you do mention on number three, I think it is, you know, special permit. It's gonna be for ancillary, you know, items, and those are gonna come almost in any operation in order to have an economic viable operation. I can manufacture under my farm winery license, spirits and distilled products, you know, to Z, and I actually have some in process, I don't have anything that's for sale yet. But that's a minor piece of the volume of what we have, and most distilleries are not using grapes that they are then harvesting to turn around into wine and then distill that wine into spirits. Distilleries are primarily making things out of stuff that's a lot cheaper than growing grapes and getting it out of state. So I want to promote farming and the ancillary, you know, use of the farm products then turns into wine and spirits, then that's great, as Sean pointed out.
Okay, Ann, I think, and then we'll go to Chuck.
Thanks. Ditto to everything Keith said. And, and with all, all well-earned and due respect to our existing winery, which I think is a wonderful place. I'm looking at number three, and a winery can sell wine from other wineries, but we don't have the same thing for breweries and distilleries. So I don't want to take anything away from wineries being able to sell wine from other wineries. Why are we, why are we putting a bigger burden on, on breweries and distilleries? If, if we're, if we're talking ag-related product, and especially if it's, you know, if, if it's, if it's, Keith said it much better than I do, if it's, you know, based on, on locally grown product for the most part, why, why would we want to, to limit the breweries and distilleries? It's a question, and I'm gonna put myself back on mute.
And it's a simple piece, that the liquor laws are extremely complicated in Connecticut, and they rule not zoning. So a farm winery can sell by your permit. Wines made by other farm wineries in Connecticut only. You cannot take and sell beer unless you get a craft cafe permit. Craft cafe permit can only be gotten by sign off by the zoning department that it's allowed in the zone that is businesses in, which residential is gonna be precluded probably a hundred percent anyway, to have a drinking establishment expand in a residential zone. So, simple answer is, state liquor laws are gonna trump connect town regs unless the town wants to keep liquor off of a particular zone, which they have the right to do so.
Thanks, Keith. That makes a lot of sense, but then does that make number three redundant?
Read the fine print here.
We don't have to answer tonight, I just.
State law can change.
It could make it, it could make it irrelevant.
Right, the state law can change, and then, you know, you then gotta go to revise your code if you want to then allow somebody to do something that you, you know, thought you'd like to, to do, right? In our case, I did get the craft cafe permit, I went through the special permit process a year and a half ago to do that, commission approved it. You know, it makes people want to visit a particular establishment because you've got a choice of products, and people just say, well, it's a winery only. You know, my other half wants to drink beer, so we're gonna go out of town and then business doesn't stay in Guilford. And if we want to support, you know, local products, then that's another view of having some diversity of products available.
And assuming, assuming that the state liquor laws did change, which I, I don't see why they would or wouldn't, but if they did, you'd want to say the same thing for a local brewery. I'd want, I'd want to be able to. Say again?
Yeah, so you want to leave that in, in case the state law changes.
No, I'm just saying that, that I think that breweries and distilleries should have the same latitude within state law as wineries. That's all, I'm just, I'm throwing it out for, for you guys to chew on, and I won't say anything more about it now.
Thank you, Chuck.
Hi, thank you. My question is, as to the preliminary paragraph, where is it, where is it, where is it? It just says, I can't see it, but it says, "a related use," at least that's what I remember seeing. Ah, no, here's what I mean, a farm, winery brewery distillery and/or similar operation accessory to a commercial farm, I just don't know what a similar operation would be. Does that necessarily booze, or is that a soft drink, or what, what is it? I assume you mean alcohol, but I, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure, I'm not sure.
Good legal question there, Chuck.
I'm like.
Remove all extraneous language.
Like, exactly, like, or similar should be removed.
Okay. Scott, you have a comment?
Thank you.
Yeah, just had a quick follow-up to Keith's comment about distilleries. Keith, would you suggest that we should not even have distilleries in this section?
I don't want to be that, you know, anti to any particular business. So the short answer is no, just the realization that to have a distillery in Guilford giving all the regulatory issues and the fact that you're not making anything from local farm products, because somebody's got to have dozens and not hundreds of farmable acres to produce stuff to go into a distillery for the volume it need to have to make something, you know, worthwhile on more than a minuscule basis is out of line, as well as then the sanitary and septic, you know, requirements for businesses and what you need, that side of it is another big troubling piece that you have to meet.
Yeah, and I, I would say any distillery, you know, that would want to be profitable would locate in someplace other than Guilford.
Well, I, I'm not sure I agree with that. I mean, I think there would be a lot of demand in, in Guilford. I mean, the, the question is, where do you find a spot that works?
Well, and shouldn't it be just a commercial space then, as opposed to residential?
I'm just throwing it out, like, I, I, I can think of a lot of spots that could work, but I'm not throwing anything out.
I mean, I'm, I think I'm happy to keep some of the language, but I do feel that, you know, maybe that just, this is not exactly feasible in, in Guilford, but you would hate for someone to come along and have a creative approach that it would be, so. I, I guess I'm just left feeling that perhaps this is not quite that helpful to existing operations, but.
I wouldn't ban it, but.
Yeah, that, that's what I'm thinking. So you want people to be able to at least have food and drink. I mean, I, but the intent of it is to appear to allow, but regulate the sale of alcoholic beverages.
I'll throw, I'll throw us a parcel out, and, and, and there's nothing on the table. A friend of mine has a big, what was a former greenhouse. That could be a great, you know, brewery area. And, you know, maybe it happens, maybe it doesn't, I don't know. But, you know, we, we don't want to ban something.
Okay, so I think, I think we've captured what we need to. I think I would like to revisit this one a little bit, just with a mind's eye towards state liquor laws. I don't know, I'll have to ask Chuck about that, not Chuck, I'm sorry, Glenn, just to give a little bit more clarity on that. Okay. Sarah, do you have a comment?
Just, just one question on five. The only thing I saw in that one is just the, you know, to, the, by special permit, approve appropriately scaled. That's the only other thing you've got in there for, again, you're, that's like the fifty percent.
Another language piece there that we have to grapple with. You know, again, I, I think, I think we might have to take, you know, another pass at this one, I think that we originally established in the first line of twenty-five acres, I'm, I'm assuming that the language of appropriately scaled is referencing that, but it may also just be giving the commission, the Planning and Zoning Commission, the discretion, you know, in this language to determine if something is appropriately scaled, because at that point, it would be a public hearing. So I'm.
Just wanted to point it out.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful to get some feedback about kind of scaling of that, so we can make that a little bit more clear.
Thank you.
There are some more hands up.
Okay, Scott, you have another comment?
Nope, just didn't take it down my butt.
Okay, thank you. Any, any other, okay. Moving on to other accessory uses. I did get a comment about sawmills. So sawmills are something that are in the current regs as accessory uses. We do have some language here about material having to be, all material having to be harvested, or anything that is cut is grown on the farm. And I did hear from two farmland owners that, that it would render their current activities non-conforming, so there is.
Yeah, I, I would just point out, there is an operation on Great Hill Road that is a, that's a sawmill, and they bring in wood from outside. But, but the, this references a sawmill as an accessory to a farm.
Right.
So, they, they're, they're already a commercial operation, they're not characterized as a farm.
Oh, okay.
Well, I would say forestry products are farming and under the definition of one dash one Q. So they belong here, and it's absolutely true that, you know, farms harvest and forest products are then cut at the sawmill, but they're brought in from around the state because that's the nature of that particular type of crop.
Right. So, so I, I, I think, so if I'm reading this as Keith is, I think this may be, it may have to be reworked, because it, it, it is saying it has to be.
Has to be grown on site.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that should be removed and just be replaced with primarily Connecticut.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, Peter, you know, his sawmill does stuff from all over the place.
Okay, thank you.
So, that, yeah, that's been changed.
Okay. Any other comments on here? There's commercial vehicles, there's accommodation for seasonal employees. The normal excavation and filling of silage, manure, and similar farm materials. I'll admit, I, I haven't looked at the specifics of this called-out section here about height exceptions, I will look into that. Go ahead, Chuck.
Just good, the building, seasonal employees, the building that can be used for them is located a hundred feet from any lot line. I, I, I guess, my only question is, good golly, what if you have a, a place that you rehab that's an old building to make it so that it can be used, and you're too close? I, I mean, is there any is there any relief in that circumstance? Is someone able to apply for a permit, let's say, to to address?
Yeah, I mean, I think there was another section that had kind of a unrealistic setback, so we could revert to just normal setbacks that are required.
Thank you, that was my.
Okay. Terrific, thank you. Ann, you have a comment on this section?
Yeah, I know we're, no, it's on the overall section. I know we're very short on time, and I also have another commitment that I have to go to, so I have to get off. I'm gonna put myself on, on stop video and mute for the last few minutes. I just want to say thank you. It is really great to be able to have such an open conversation and have such a civilized and pleasant disagreements, and the, your gracious response to all of our comments is just, I, I as a citizen, as well as a farmer, I, I'm greatly appreciative, and I, I really, I'm, I'm just, it's a great process, and I thank you very much. And now I'll put myself on mute.
Thank you, Ann, thank you for your time, much appreciated. Okay, signage. I really didn't pick up on much from this one.
Just a quick, I appreciate Ann's comment there on, on your graciousness and how this is going, Jamie. So again, thank you for myself as well. Under number two, under the accessory stuff, a hundred feet away from any other lot line, I don't think that should be any different than any other residential requirement for a house. And our existing situation now is, is a regular house exception and not within a hundred feet.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't, I'm not sure where this came from, but it seems to be, you know, alluding to some need for seasonal employees to live further off than other individuals, so I'm happy with that correction, thank you.
Don't discriminate.
Yeah, and yeah, it does feel a little strange like that, so happy to, happy to remove that. Okay, signage. Signage for seasonal products. Signage for seasonal products. Uh, we do, we do have assigned ordinance. I think it would be wise that I ensure that these two things speak to each other.
I think we all agree that signage to highlight, you know, where people go to get to farm operations is important. And that is on that directional signage. Um, so that's important under number two. Um, the three square feet um area that um is a little bit small, my destination for what we're already currently doing. Uh, we've got A frames that are two by three feet that are six square feet and total that we're using and um, you know, three square feet is then half of that, which is your sort of smaller typical real estate sign.
Hey, Keith, Keith, where where are those? I mean, I know you have a billboard on 95, but where where are those? Where are those other signs?
Pick your own directional signs.
Only see them, right. You only see them up when pick your own is open. We take them up and down.
Okay, alright, okay.
And I'm pushing the four.
Okay, I've got I've got the allotment of uh six in here, I think, is that um, not exceed four feet in any dimension. So we're looking at six square feet. But Sarah, is that getting to your point? And you would like to see a different square footage?
No, I mean, that that for the directional signs for two, that would be, that's fair for an A frame. I mean, we don't, we're not looking to be obnoxious, but just for customers who are driving to to notice where they're supposed to be going. It's it's hard to to do on like a real estate sign. So um, and I think under here, and maybe when I read it earlier, and of course I'm not seeing it now, but I think there was a limit as to how many signs. Um, oh, there's. Yep, two way. It is there. It's I was looking for an actual number, not the spelled out word.
Four unlimited directional signs.
Yep. So I mean, for from the Route One property, I think, doing my count, I think we have exactly four. Um, so it just.
Yeah.
Actually, in the fall, I I take that back. Sometimes in the fall, there could be five. So, I mean, I'm I'm not going to push it. It's looking for, be completely selfish, but.
No, no more.
When you get a Christmas tree farm, I mean, the Christmas tree farm that's located on, you know, West Street and and North Guilford to get from, you know, Route 77, come off of AD and come up one side street.
They need more than a couple signs. That's right.
They they need more than that. And again, if they're up and they're down for their open hours, um, I think, you know, having, you know, six, eight, you know, is allowable.
Yeah, I mean.
Unless all of a sudden we have Christmas tree farms all over the town.
I I agree. I I I think for seasonal signs, I I I don't want, I I I mean, limiting them maybe to some extent, but to get up to West Street to Joe's place. I I just think, you know, it should not be limited that much.
I agree, and especially since you have in here anyways with the permission of, you know, property owner, if you're putting it on somebody's land.
Yes, I I totally agree. Because, you know, I mean, getting up to West Street from Guilford is.
Not easy.
I challenge most of the people on the call to find West Street, you know.
I was just adding to that thing, your property owners, you also may also might add um a right of way permit from the town engineer may be required also.
Yeah, but I mean, that that that's reasonable. I mean, you know, they could ask permission to put a sign.
You know, the corner. Yeah, I think that is a good one, Kevin, because um there are signs that then you are going to be on the town property in the right of way as opposed to then, you know, on somebody's far enough back off the property line, so it can't be seen from the road.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, save this. Let's see how we're doing. I think we're close. Close to the end of the section here. Um, the keeping of animals, I I I do feel like the ag commission's comment is spot on here. I was a little surprised myself at the uh the inclusion of domesticated uh animals in this uh section. Um, so, you know, I'm happy to try to rework this with Glenn. Um, to uh, you know, remove that from uh the the section that is more talking about livestock.
Yeah, I would concur that, uh, you know, kennels are a commercial operation and deserve their own um, mention section of where they're permitted or special permits to do so. Um, it is ironic in one sense that the commissioner of agriculture is in charge of uh of dogs, kennels and all that sort of thing. And that I personally know that that's an enormous amount of time that they spend that is not related to food production uh to handle, you know, animal issues that are domesticated pets.
Okay.
Keep it out of the farming section.
Right.
Our regulations.
Okay. Okay, so so remove from farming, but still have this uh sort of designation of the rating, the raising, the breeding and the sales. I think that was also something that um, perhaps is why uh it was included in this section.
And if it's in this section here, it should be maybe pushed down to like 6.3 or something like that. So it's separated from ag and it has its own little section within keeping of animals. So you divide up ag animals versus domestic animals, but not having them locked in the same little little points there.
I see. Thanks, Kevin. Yeah, that's that's a good, good piece of feedback. And it also gets to, um, I was speaking with the uh Sustainable Guilford Task Force and there are a few uh apiarist or bee hive keepers in town. Uh, and we currently do not have any regs on the keeping of bees. So perhaps if we were to uh insert a regulation on the keeping of bees, it would be uh appropriate in a, you know, 6.3 kind of further down with the section, although we could.
I would ask, do we, do we need a regulation for the apiaries?
Apiaries are allowed.
Yeah, I mean, just, yeah.
One dash one Q again.
I mean, if somebody has, right, and somebody has 25 beehives in their one acre lot, then that's a little excessive, but um it's, um, you know, bees are necessary for lots of different things, including pollination. And we bring in 80 hives of bees commercially to pollinate our orchards. But we have two or three that we have hopefully survive annually around the farm. That obviously aren't overkill for the numbers per per acre.
Yeah, um, I guess, I guess where I was going with that was just for the 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 smaller uh kind of residential hobby farm that has interest in chickens and and bees.
Well, all I would say is until it's a problem, I would not make it a regulation.
Okay. Um, all right. All right, uh, so we're agreeing to kind of separate that section from the more agricultural livestock. Uh, chickens and rabbits, this would uh still kind of be more in the livestock section, we would agree, or.
Yes, I agree.
Um, and then keeping of livestock. So maybe we we insert chickens and rabbits into here. Uh, I did, I did get a comment from um a a friend of Joel Heelander's. I can't quite remember his name now, but he did mention this idea of um, at times having a certain number of cattle uh on a property if they're there for grazing. So the farmland owner is leasing their land to cattle owner for grazing. Uh, and that there needs to be some form of flexibility to allow for, you know, uh adult cattle with their offspring and, you know, so uh, I I think we've captured it here in the weaned calf up to one year in age, but I'm not, I'm not sure. So anyone who has more experience in, you know, trying to keep a certain heads of cattle uh on their grounds could chime in here.
I mean, my quick reaction here is that um farmers are having animals and that they um generally are going to take very good care of their animals and they're not uh there to abuse animals and have them not have enough feed or water where they are. Um, you know, kept. So, you know, with that piece of it is to not overly dig in here to turn on worried about numbers, because, you know, once cattle have some offspring, calves are around. You know, they're going to move them to the appropriate space, even if they're born in a pasture. Um, and they may have referenced there as far as Joel's friend or family. Um, they ran out of space and then animals are there intensively maybe for a few weeks and then move on to another pasture. So the number per acre may be overall on the total acreage that they're handling and they rotate the pastures around. But on a particular day, you could go see, you know, a lot double the number in a particular field than what the regs allow. But that doesn't mean that they're mistreating them and not handling them properly. So just ask for that type of understanding as we review these things.
Okay.
The AI commission may can comment back again.
Great. All right. And also I think there's some elements from the ag commission's letter that can be um added to this section. I believe this is the last page now, just sort of talking about. Um, I think we added limitation on suitable land for calculating the livestock amount. Um, uh, and can still be used for livestock, but not calculating the number of livestock. Any uh concerns there?
Reflection back, you had best management practices previous on in the first early pages that refer to this and that that best management practices is um where the go to source is for my input.
Okay.
Keith, the best management practices were if somebody got a special permit, their best management practices, if they just go and do a regular farm without a special permit, they're um, stuck to the animals per unit uh acreage number there until they file for a special permit. So that's sort of the differentiation between the um um, non-commercial versus commercial um farms there.
Yeah, thank you, Kevin. Um, I'm just referring to it as far as where suitability is. Then the best management practices that are put out by deep and cooperative extensions or overlay the whole big picture of uh people, you know, handling and treating animals and where they can be and wetlands and all that piece of it. But don't want to reinvent the wheel, you know, within local regs that exist somewhere else that can be referenced. My short point.
Just wondering where the 15% um slope and that is that, is that a state rig? I'm just sure, not sure where 15% came in.
Once you get to certain grades, the the increase is erosion.
Oh.
Looking at the erosion factor by the the animals over grazing and running on it.
It makes sense, but where did it come from?
The the regs, when this beginning of these regs came through, the AI commission had a grant and they hired a um representative, I think it was from a farmland trust or some organization like that, which helped um write this section of regulations um multiple years ago. So it's through their, through their guidance.
Thank you.
And my other comment here is under number three, um, the setbacks off of the property line, referenced this previously.
Yeah.
Um, shouldn't be any different for agriculture than it should be for other structures and, you know, smells and orders. Um, while they will be occurring from time to time, that's part of best management practices as well as the right to farm.
Okay. Great.
So if somebody didn't like a farm, you know, coming or doing something, they could turn around all of a sudden, put up a, you know, shack, you know, on their property within their setback and they can push somebody else then, you know, 80 feet back because they just put, you know, a shed within a 10 foot setback on their property. That ain't fair to me.
Uh, Chuck, did you have a comment on this?
Yeah, I I would agree with that and and only add that uh, I I think, for example, my my barn, I I don't know whether I'm 100 feet or I'm not. So that's why I was uh, in agreement with whatever the existing uh setback rule would be, quite quite far. Uh, so hopefully we don't uh have people yelling at us effectively for existing uh and exercising the right to farm.
Right. Well, uh, I think we've made it. Any, uh, that is the end of of this section. Um, any, any comments, concerns that we didn't cover? I mean, I think what I'd like to do is uh provide this feedback uh to Glenn, uh, our consultant and have him help me, uh, you know, sort of re recraft uh, some, some sections, do some editing here, uh incorporating the feedback. Uh, and then I think maybe what what I'll do is just try to keep um, iterations, maybe we'll do an edit and and save that uh in the material section of the website so that folks can see what was there and then what we changed it to. Um, but again, if you have any other further comments, questions, concerns, uh, feel free to reach out uh, to the planning and zoning department, uh, visit, a phone call, an email. I think if you if you have something very specific you want to say, uh, please try to get it in writing, because sometimes I don't uh, pick it all up in a phone call. Uh, but other than that, I thank you for your time and your efforts this evening. Uh, it's so nice to kind of have a shared responsibility here. So I thank you for that.
Jamie, Jamie, thank you for organizing this so in such a great way. Thank you.
Yeah, Jamie.
I'm glad it was useful. Yes. Okay, uh, great. Thank you.
Yeah, much appreciated. And I think, you know, we'll have some comments probably from others that couldn't be at the meeting uh, because of the other uh Guilford Fair, uh, you know, meeting that was tonight. So I look forward to having some input at future sessions and putting it in and writing as well. Thank you.
Terrific. Thank you. Bye, everybody.